Wapooger zoning board of appeals meeting to order, could I have a roll call please be?
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Lorenini?
Here.
Mrs. Delarue?
Here.
Mrs. Shaw?
Yes, here.
Mr. Sabadi?
Here. Okay, first order of business tonight would be the acceptance of the minutes from the February ninth, twenty twenty one meeting, as everybody had a chance to review.
Yes.
Any, any, any comments, revisions, modifications? None?
Nope.
Okay, could I have a motion please to accept the minutes as written?
Motion?
Do you have a second?
Seconded.
Did John, should we, should we second, I believe? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't move. Alright, second order of business tonight is a public hearing, appeal number twenty one seven seven twenty, Patrick Igliotti seeking a area variance section two forty dash thirty seven of the district regulations in an R forty zoning district. No structure can be more than six hundred square feet in size and not more than twenty feet in height. Excuse me, the applicant is proposing a garage of fourteen hundred and forty four square feet and twenty five feet in height. The property is located at eleven sixty nine, Route three seventy six, and is identified as tax grid number six three five eight zero one one five zero seven nine seven in the town of Wapooger. Could I have a motion please to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to-
Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so should we open, uh, made the motion, John second? Okay, I thought I saw Patrick, eh? Patrick, you're there, right Pat?
Yes, I am.
Okay, generally if we were in town hall, we'd ask you to step up to the microphone and, and give us a little brief summary of what you, what you got going on, but you could do that via virtual now. So just for the, the benefit of the board and any public that may be listening in, we'd like you to give us a brief description of, of what you are proposing and why you need that.
Basically, I'm proposing a three car garage approximately thirty eight by thirty eight feet, basically for my three cars that we have. I am on twelve and a half acres, um, out in the woods and, uh, you know, we're just looking to store our vehicles in there. That's about it.
Okay, so we were, we were all at the house there on Saturday, so we got a pretty good look of, for what you got going on. I have a couple of questions for you, the guys might as well. Now, did the, uh, the garage now is thirty eight by thirty eight feet, correct?
Yes.
Fourteen hundred and forty square, forty four square feet. It's, it's, you're asking for a fairly large variance. Now, the garage itself is primarily going to be used for cars?
Yes.
For trucks or-
Well, a pick, my, my pickup, which is, uh, you know, a twenty five hundred and, uh, my wife has a Tahoe and I have another small car.
Gotcha, gotcha. And, um, as far as, I think one of the guys asked you when we were out the other day, uh, as far as like above the cars, is anything going to be going on above that?
No.
No? Cause you do have, you have a step and doors on the side of the garage.
Oh, I mean, that storage, uh, uh,
Yeah.
I'm putting, I'm putting, uh, trust storage, trust storage.
So just stor-, so just storage up on top?
Yes.
Okay. So now, as far as the, 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 the size of the garage itself, pretty, I, I could see where you, you know, for a three bay, right, the, the width is pretty much what you need for, for a three bay, but you have a depth of thirty eight feet. You know, typically, right, a garage is maybe twenty, twenty two, twenty four, maybe twenty five feet? Is there a reason why you need thirty eight feet?
No, just, you know, I like to be more comfortable in there. You know, I may put, uh, you know, like, uh, my little workbench in, put my, my hand tools in there, uh.
Right. Right, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big footprint. You know, I guess is why we're all getting that, you know, and, 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 you know, we have to be, we as a board have to be, you know, careful with some of these, with these variances and not setting a precedent in the town. And then you said your brother next door had a, had a fairly large garage, you remember how big that is? It was a little smaller than yours, you said?
Uh, yes, I think it's thirty six by either thirty six or thirty four by thirty six, not sure which one. And the only reason why I made mine a little bit bigger is I drove my truck into his garage and I have a longer, a long bed truck where he has a shared bed pickup, so.
Right, right. Do you, do you need that much in depth? Like I said, I could see the width, but do you really need that much in depth?
Yeah. I actually had that forty by thirty eight by forty at one point. When I drove my, when I drove my pickup in there, you know, I brought it to thirty eight. A lot of time you have your little tow hitch on your Reese truck where your tow hitch sticks out.
Right. Yeah, no, no, I get that. Thirty, thirty feet's pretty deep, but I know you-
A lot of times we may have a plow in our truck also.
Mm-hmm.
To plow the driveway, so when you-
Right.
Back the truck in with the plow, it, 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 it's tight.
Gotcha, gotcha. And I know the other things we, we consider when, when, uh, looking at these types of variances is size of the property, you know, where, where the, where the garage or the addition may be and who's around it or who's not around it in some cases, right? And, uh, you know, we all weigh that in in our decision. Um, and, uh, guys, do you have, uh, any other questions for, for Pat?
Uh, yeah, the, the property is twelve acres or eight acres?
It's, uh, it was eight acres, um, but a while ago when we finished up my brother's property, we have eighty eight acres altogether and they all connect in the back.
Yeah, I'm just going out to survey where it says eight point one five.
Yeah, it became twelve and a half acres.
Okay. And how, how, how close is the garage to the house?
Oh, I would say approximately, I don't know, twelve feet?
And, and the, the garage from the property line, the side yard?
How close is it to the side yard?
Yeah, is that around a twenty five feet?
I think it's gonna be more like twenty eight feet.
Okay.
If, if I can keep it closer to the house, I could make it twenty eight feet.
Yeah, I mean, have you looked into attaching it to the house in any way? I mean, if, if you attach it to the house, it seems like you'd be able to do this as of right without a zoning variance.
Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to, just the way the house is designed.
Yeah, there's no way you get like a little breezeway between the two, small connection, nothing?
Uh, breezeway, uh... I mean, I guess it would be possible if I moved it closer and tried to, you know, make a, make a angle breezeway. Basically just walk out of the garage, the, the side door of the house and-
And-
Or, I mean, a little, a little, uh, a roof.
Right. And that, that, that's one, one consideration.
Closed in.
Sorry, what was that Barbara?
It would have to be closed in, it would have to literally be attached as like part of the house. It would have to be a continuous attachment, not just a roof.
Not just a roof structure.
Actually, you work with at least windows, right, basically, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That would be kind of tough.
Yeah, that, that's, that, that's one, one avenue, uh, to possibly explore or by possibly maybe take, taking a little bit off your depth, which would reduce your, your variance somewhat. That's something that you may, may consider.
Uh, I mean, thirty eight is really what I need. I mean, I, I don't see the difference between thirty eight and thirty six when, when the size of the property being out in the woods is like this and the size of my house, it's pretty proportionate.
Yeah, I mean, it's all about the square footage, you know, it's your footprint. It'd take two feet across the back of your footprint, it reduces the, reduces the size of your variance by quite a bit.
Uh, about, what about eighty feet, thirty square feet?
Thirty two would make it like, uh, twelve, twelve hundred plus.
Well, let's see, what's, 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 what's two times thirty eight?
Yeah.
Thirty eight minus thirty, equals twelve sixteen.
Okay, say that again, Barbara?
Um, thirty eight times thirty two is twelve hundred and sixteen square feet.
Number thirty, thirty two is, is-
Thirty two.
Is not-
It doesn't make the, the variance.
If you take, you take two foot off the back and it was thirty six by thirty eight, you know, that's gonna bring it down to about, what, thirteen hundred maybe and change?
It would be thirty six eighty.
If, if you took two foot off the back, it brings you thirty, that would mean it would be thirty eight times thirty six equals thirteen sixty eight.
Correct.
So basically it's two times thirty eight, which is about seventy six square feet.
Right, correct. Yeah, it reduces the size of your variance somewhat. Again, the, the variance is more than substantial, this is kind of what we're wrestling with a little bit, Pat.
I mean, I, I just don't, I just don't see the seventy six square feet being a big deal in the essence of, you know, what I have here.
Well, I, I don't think you guys have any more questions?
Yeah, over normal, you'd like six hundred square foot. So we are going like over two X double. And that's the concern, I think. I, I see, yes, the property is large, but it's a large square foot variance we are asking.
But I mean, yet my, yet my neighbor has a, has a garage thirty, only two, two foot smaller than mine.
Understood, right. And your other neighbor maybe go for thirty eight by forty next time because his neighbor will have thirty eight by thirty eight. So I don't know, will we be able to stop?
Well, which is correct, depending, I think it's, I think it really depends on the circumstance and-
Sure.
Where the property is and how much property. I, I would never even ask for a, a garage this big if I was on a two acre piece.
Right, definitely not.
And, and on top of the twelve acre piece that I'm on, it connects to my family property that has eighty eight acres altogether.
It, it's certainly, certainly the, the property and where the house sits is certainly a consideration. Yeah, cause I get you to, I'd ask you to work with us a little bit, I guess, but.
I mean, I, I could try to make it thirty seven feet, I mean, go back over to my brother's garage and drive the truck in and see what I got, uh, I mean, you know, I could do that. I just have to get the plow on it and see what I can. I, I, I do know with the plow on it at my brother's house-
Yeah.
Is very tight. So if I put the same plow on the truck that I have, which, like I said, he has a short bed, which is actually a six foot bed, mine's an eight foot bed, I added two to it and that's basically how I came up with thirty eight. That's the only way I came up with thirty eight.
Yeah, gotcha.
And you had said that when we were out there, Patrick, that, that, but, um, again, like Pete said, we're all wrestling with the size. Um, and I know that, uh, you know, I'm reading your, your explanation of why you need the variance and, uh, it's feasible where it needs to be built and at a size compatible with our needs. Um, you have one large vehicle, right? I mean, it's not gonna be a commercial garage, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a residential garage.
Oh, it's my residential garage, yeah, I mean, it, my wife has a, a Tahoe.
Right, yeah. Which I don't think is near the size of that, you know, twenty five hundred that you have. And I know with the plow on it, it makes it a little bit tight, but, um, I, I think it's, uh, you know, something that we have- really should be brought down, something that should be brought down. I don't know how you would like to do it, I mean.
Well, if thirty six feet doesn't work for me, I can't bring it down anymore. I mean, I'll go thirty seven feet, I, I'm assuming one foot, I'll just, it'll be within one foot of the garage door when it closes.
Yeah, thirty six will work.
Yeah.
How about the width, Pat? Do you need, do you need the ten foot wide doors?
Well, I mean, the thirty eight foot works in width wise, I just put the little bigger doors so it's easier to get into.
Right.
Smaller door, but it's still the same thirty eight that you need to, is that when you put the ten foot doors, it's just, you know, aesthetically looks right and-
Right, but if you did nine foot doors, that you would, would that be a difficulty getting your truck in?
Nine foot, I, I have to, what's a standard door? I think, whatever the standard door is, is eight feet?
Yeah.
I, I could check, I mean, I could check, I know the plows eight and a half feet wide.
Yeah, I, I, I did, I did a little homework and, and I know that, I know, sorry, I know where the pickup truck and a plow, nine foot door, uh, works.
Yeah, I guess I, my plows eight, eight and a half foot, so it does work, it's usually on the side going in.
So please work-
Get in there, but-
Right. Right, right, I got you. So I, I guess if we, if we were to maybe reduce the size, if you, you reduced each bay by a, by a foot, that would shrink you down to thirty five across, right?
Yeah, but I'm not gonna do thirty five across.
No?
My brother's is thirty six, I mean.
Oh, right, right, I'm sorry, your brother's, your brother's thirty six wide probably? Your brother's, we're like thirty six, thirty six maybe?
I think it's thirty six, thirty six.
Mm-hmm. I got it. Well, like, it's definitely-
I mean, I could try shortening the, the depth of it to thirty seven if you like, if, if one foot makes a difference.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, you know, we're looking, you know, like I said, we do, you know, the, the board struggles with some of these things, sometimes we understand what you need, but we gotta be, we gotta be real careful of, of what we do. But we also take the, the, the size of the property and where the garage is into, into, into consideration, of course. We, even, even at the thirty seven, it's, you know, double the variance that, you know, is allowable. So it's, it's, it's a big variance, but I, I think, you know, if we see you might be willing to work with us a little bit, the board's more apt to, uh, work with you as well.
I mean, the, 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 the mistake that I might have made is I should have brought, put in a forty by forty and went down from there. Which, you know, I didn't, I didn't want to see that, I mean, I'm just being honest.
Is that just every shoot for the roof and at the side of the barn kind of thing?
But I didn't, but I didn't need forty by forty, so I figured, why do that?
Right, no, no, I get that.
You know, I, I mean, like I said, I'm just being honest.
No, I, no, I, I get that. And I, 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 I think if we can, you know, we reduce this somewhat, I think we'd have, uh, uh, you know, would go a long way with the board.
Yeah, I, I mean, on my end, you know, cutting off a foot on the back is kind of inconsequential. I mean, it's, it's a pretty small adjustment, you know, you're losing very little square footage, you know, it doesn't get anywhere near a threshold that we would usually want to approve. Uh, I, I think it'd be worth looking into other, if there's a way to position this to attach to the front of the house. It's gonna be the same height as the house, it's gonna be similar mass. I think for most views, driving towards the house, it's gonna appear as though it is attached. I, I, I think it's worth at least looking into if there is a logical way to, to connect the two structures.
Yeah, you know, you know, Pat, what, what David's saying, I don't know if it was clear before we brought this up, that if, if the, eh, it's kind of a back door for you. If the, the garage is attached by a breezeway, uh, the footprint is no longer an issue and there's no variance required.
No, I understand, it's just that breezeway, I mean, I, you know, the, the expense starts coming into this also, but I mean, I, I could probably build a breezeway, but as Barbara was saying, I have to build a breezeway that's completely enclosed.
Yes.
Windows, I mean, I have to build a structure, I have to, I have to dig a, you know, a footing. I'd have to rip up, uh, my, my sidewalks, digging next to the house, uh, not an easy task, I'm not saying it's not can't be done, it's-
Right, right.
But that way you can bring closer to house too.
Uh, I mean, compared to the overall construction you're doing anyways for this garage, it seems, it seems minimal. You know, if, if you can get a little bit closer, you're talking a five by ten additional areas of concrete, I mean, it seems fairly minimal.
Well, it's not that minimal, you have to put a, you have, you have to put a totally different type of roof on it, a much lower roof on it. I'm gonna have to build off the house, off the stucco. Probably have to cut the stucco off, so I could tie in the rafters into the, uh, into the house.
That's true.
Uh, windows, footings, and the big problem is, you know, digging right next to my house.
You're not gonna be digging that low.
No, four and a half feet, four feet.
You, you have a basement of the house, I mean, you're not gonna be, it's not like you're undermining your foundation.
No, I would not, I would not be undermining it.
Okay, actually, it might be, be more, more or less attached to your existing garage, I would think, maybe, no?
If my, you know, unfortunately, if I had a-
It seems like it would, yeah.
What's that?
It seems like it would be pretty close to the garage, correct?
A pretty, uh-
It would be, it would be very close to the existing garage, right?
It'd, it'd-
It'd be about twelve feet from the existing garage.
Yeah.
I can't move any, I can't move it any closer than that because as you go back, um, in between the pool and where that shed was, in front of that is my well.
Right.
So I mean, I, you know, by, by moving closer to the house, I, I, I then have an encumberment of my well and, you know, really my-
I don't think, I, I don't think you need to move it any closer. I, I, we were just saying that, you know, that the attachment would be more or less to your garage and, and not your living space, I think.
So if I attached it to the house by a, a breezeway?
Correct.
I don't need a variance?
That's correct.
Hey, can, can we confirm Barbara, the, the, the minimal requirement that you would need to make in terms of the attachment? You know, just cause, uh, that code section was revised recently?
Unfortunately, I don't, I can't get into it right now to-
Yeah.
So, if they want to adjourn this in two weeks, we could do a little recent-
Yeah, Pat, the, the, the details of the, the attachment Barbara, Barbara can't give you right now. It may be, it may be worth looking into. And I mean, we could just speak here to, uh, you know, adjourn the public hearing and have you on at the next meeting.
Okay, when's that come?
Two weeks. Yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks, so it would give you, Pat, a chance to see if it's even possible from your point of view. And I can look to see what you would actually want to do and I can email you the code. And then we can reconvene in two weeks and see if that works.
Okay.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, if it doesn't work to where I, you know, I'm gonna do this in-depth construction, I'm gonna go over to my brother's garage, put the truck back in and, and measure exactly what I need. So if thirty six by thirty six works, I, I just don't have an answer without me actually, you know-
Perfect, that'd be great, that'd be great, and then we'll all have all the, the information we need to make a, a decision.
So if there's a public hearing, so let's see if anyone is from the public wants to comment before adjourn this for this evening for, on this matter?
Okay, I'll open up the, the floor to anybody in the public that may be listening in that has any questions or, or, uh, comments on this application? Doesn't appear that there are, Lisa. Okay, so we, Lisa, would we close the public hearing and adjourn?
I would adjourn, leave the public hearing open, just adjourn it till the next meeting.
Okay.
Because technically you're not supposed to accept further evidence after the public hearing is closed.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. All right, so then we, we need a motion then to adjourn?
Yes.
What question?
I need a motion?
I, I, I-
Um, if thirty six by thirty six works, are we, are we better with that considering my brother's that size?
We're, we're certainly amenable to it.
Okay, so let me, uh, I, I guess without me going over there, which I can't do right now, um, I will check that out in the next, you know, couple of days and analyze other options.
Sure.
Yes.
No, that's great. I, I, I think that's, I appreciate you, you working with us and we'll, we'll look forward to hearing you at the, uh, next meeting. So could I, I have a motion, guys, to adjourn the public hearing to the next meeting?
I'll make a motion.
It has to be said, March ninth.
I'm sorry, adjourn?
I'll make a motion. Whoever's, whoever's talking, go ahead.
Okay, we'll make, so we're gonna have, we're gonna need a motion to adjourn the public hearing to March ninth.
I need a motion to adjourn and reconvene since March ninth?
Great, I have a second, please.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Pat, so we'll see you on the, uh, the ninth.
Thank you very much for your time.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next item on the agenda tonight, uh, item number three, is appeal number, is a discussion, appeal number twenty one seven seven one nine, Stephen and Amy Irawjima, hopefully I got that right, seeking a use variance section two forty thirty seven and two forty dash sixteen A of the district regulations in an R forty zoning district. The applicants are seeking a use variance to legalize their existing marina in the Hamlet of Chelsea on the Hudson River. The property is located at one dash five Front Street and identified as tax grid numbers five nine five six dash one two dash nine five six 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 one, five nine five six dash twelve dash nine five five six five five, five nine five six dash twelve dash nine five eight six six seven, and five nine five six dash twelve nine six seven six seven one in the town of Wapooger. Yeah, that's a, that's a mouthful. All right, so we're opening up the floor as a discussion, I think I see Amy, Amy on?
Yes, Amy and, and my husband Stephen with me here. I'm gonna let him, um, first of all, thank you for having us and I'm gonna let him sort of give you a little background on the property and introduce, um, and then, you know, I'm happy to answer questions and kind of-
Sure, sure, just for the record, please, just state your, your husband, your name?
Yes, sir. Right, uh, my name's Stephen Irawjima.
Okay, and you have the floor, Stephen?
Okay, um, again, like my wife said, thank you for the time, we appreciate it. Um, so this property was purchased by my stepfather in the late seventies. Um, it was a marina at that time. He has, uh, always, um, I don't know if anyone has known him, his name is Michael Schwall. Um, he, he's always operated it as a marina, it was a very, uh, it was, it was a very, just a good, successful place on the Hudson, um, and I came into the family, my mother married, you know, I was early teens. So I've been here now, you know, I was here for thirty years, you know, now, um, on and off the property, working with him and, um, you know, going through the business. We have, um, since then he has passed. My, my mother lives in Florida and they, uh, you know, they kind of had some financial tax issues, um, cause towards the end, my stepfather had gotten ill and honestly just didn't pay the taxes and just the business went really downhill. So I moved up from New York City, I met my wife here and we got married and we ended up, uh, helping my mother out in that regard and taking over what we thought was gonna be a pretty easy task, uh, continuing to operate the marina. Um, lo and behold, you know, we're here with, you find folks, uh, trying to ask for a variance to continue the use so that, um, you know-
So we can sell the property?
We can sell the property as a marina to the next purchaser, whomever it may be.
Right. And did you folks, did you purchase the property from your, from your parents?
Yes. So, yeah, so his mother was kind of in a tight spot, um, she was in Florida. The, the property was, you know, as my husband said, sort of falling into disrepair. Um, and our intention was to help her out, live here for, you know, a short time. Um, you know, if the marina business could, could have continued without our, you know, financial capital being a part of it, that would have been, um, you know, a neat task. But really our intention was to, to sell it down the line, um, you know, and, and have somebody continue it as a marina because we're not really, you know, in a position to do that ourselves, um, you know, and haven't been, you know, definitely had high hopes is all people do with a new property, but, you know.
It just is a lot, it's a lot, or, or, you know, you, by myself and my family, it's just a lot.
Gotcha. Now, now that has, how, how long has it been since the, the marina has actually been functioning as a marina?
So for several years after, you know, his stepfather passed, um, and we're here, you know, we were trying to keep at least dry storage on the property, that sort of thing. Nothing really at, at the same level, first of all, there was so much mess just to be cleaned up here, um, when we, you know, inherited the property essentially, um, you know, boats that were left, all sorts of debris. Um, you know, but we've tried to keep it going for, you know, for a while. Um, it's definitely been over the two year point at, at this, you know, point in time, or, you know, at least that we could prove on paper. Um, you know, we had it on and off the market, we've tried to sell it as a single family home. It's not designed to be a single family home at all. We're surrounded by commercial property with Metro North right here, um, the boat ramp, which is very active, as you guys know, um, you know, right here on the town of Wapooger boat ramp. And then we have Chelsea Yacht Club, which has been here for two hundred years, you know, as our only other neighbor with sailboats, you know, up in our side yard essentially. Um, you know, it's not meant to be a single family home. Every time we've had an interested party who's wanted to continue it as a marina, they of course get nervous because it's a non-conforming, you know, R forty zoning. And, um, you know, they don't want to take that on, um, so, you know, we haven't been able to sell it. And we're kind of just sitting here digging a hole for ourselves, trying to, you know, trying to keep it afloat.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, and I'll have Lisa weigh in in a minute, but I, I think, uh, that because it has not been a, a functioning marina for quite some time, the, the use variance may, may be beyond the purview of this board and may need to be referred to the town board. But I'll, and Lisa may want to weigh in on that.
Sure, so, um, and I think Barbara may have started to explain this to you guys, but there's four standards that you have to meet in order to get the use variance. And the one that I don't see you being able to meet because you purchased the property is the self-created hardship. Because if you buy a property regardless of whether it's arms length or not arms length and it's not able to be used for the use that you want it for, you, by law, the ZBA can't grant a use-
you, by law, the ZBA can't grant a use variance, it's what's called a self-created hardship because the, the law feels like you shouldn't buy something if it's not that use. And so what the, the, I would recommend, and I haven't talked to, I mean, I started the conversation with the town attorney, who's different. But it would seem to me that your better course would be to ask the town board to rezone the property so that it's a lawful marina and you don't have to jump through the financial hardship hoops that you may or may not be, I started taking a look at that, some of that's great, but I think you're still gonna need more um, information financially if you wanna go the use variance route, but I just don't see a way to get past the self-created hardship. You know, once you buy a property that's not zoned for what you wanna use it for, it's self-created. And the fact that it has been used for a marina since, you know, for fifty years and that a marina is the best use for the property and all those things are great. But legally, that doesn't help the zoning board in being able to make a determination that you guys should get a use variance. It's really a town board thing that you should be getting a zoning change as opposed to a use variance.
Okay, um, what would you suggest then, best course of action moving forward? I mean, I think as far as the hardship goes, there's a lot of, you know, first of all, financial-wise, I didn't want to just send a whole packet of our entire financials, I mean, I can certainly provide a lot more in terms of the cleanup and the, the hardship that we have been through because the property was essentially, you know, the, the state of the property was inherited, you know, we were, we were doing something as part of a family, um, you know. You know, we didn't want her to lose it, you know, and it to, to fall out of the family entirely, um, you know.
Write a letter to the town board and ask them to consider a zoning change, you don't need to do any of the, you don't need the four steps that you need for this part. So you don't need to show a financial hardship, you don't need to show any of that, their analysis is different. Their analysis is what should this property be used for? What's the highest and best purpose for this property and what should it be on our zoning code? And it would seem that since it's been a marina forever and it seems like it's, you know, given Metro North and given the yacht club next door and given other things it would seem that the use really should be a marina and they should just have a code section. So I think, I mean, to start that process, it would be as simple as sending a letter to the town board and asking to get on an agenda and asking for a zoning change. Now, the catch for you is there is no use in the town that is a marina use.
Right, that, that was gonna be my next question, I'm, I'm pretty sure there is no zoning currently, even on our tax assessor bill, it does say marina, but it's not an actual
Right, I saw some of parcel said like vacant residential or things like that, but, but, I mean, the town board can create, in the same way that the town board would need to come up with you know, regulations for what the use would be, they can create the use. And they can, you know, it may, makes sense for, for the yacht club to be part of the same zone, and whether it's a marina zone or whether that use gets added to one of the existing zones as a, a permitted use. It's not, I mean, it's not a completely simple process, but it's certainly not a crazy hard process and it would be a lot easier factually for you guys to make that case, I think, than making the case here.
Okay.
I don't see how you get past the self-created hardship.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's no doubt that we, you know, we, we see that you, it has been or it was once a functioning marina and it's probably the best use for that property, as Elisa stated, you know, the avenue to go would be to approach the town board.
And when are their meetings, are they in concurrently with yours, um, timeframe-wise, every two weeks or?
No, they're, they're, they're on different nights of the week, but if you go on the town website, they, they have them listed
Okay.
It's like a month.
Well, Amy, with this advice from our attorney, you would have to write a letter to the supervisor explaining what you're looking to accomplish, and then he would have to put you on the next available town board agenda, you can't just show up. And the town board meets the second and fourth, uh, Mondays.
Second and fourth Mondays, okay, thank you, Barbara.
Right, the supervisor is the, basically the chair of the town board, so he would be the one that would place it on the agenda.
Okay. Um, and I would just email him directly?
Yes, we could do it tomorrow if you want in the morning.
What's that, Barbara?
We should have a conversation tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you, that'd be great. Um, is there anything else, um, you know, going forward that I should be aware of or that we can share with you guys?
No, I, I, I think as far as this board goes, we, we, you, you know where, where, where we stand, and I, and I, I think, uh, Elisa explained what would be the best course of action for you.
Okay, well, thank you again for your time then.
Sure, no, thank you for coming out tonight.
All right, Barbara, I'll speak with you tomorrow then?
Yes, in the morning.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night.
You too, bye-bye.
Goodnight.
Hey, since there is no further business before this board tonight, I don't believe, I would ask for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, guys, thanks, Lisa.
You're very welcome.
Okay.